We're good, yes.
All right, I would like to call this November 12th, 2024 City Council Meeting to Order. I'm Clarky, please call the roll.
Councilmember Greg, Councilmember Shealy.
Here.
Councilmember McBride, Councilmember Mitchell, Councilmember Brady.
Present.
Councilmember Gregory, Councilmember Waring, Councilmember Seekings, Councilmember Tinkler, Councilmember Bowden, Councilmember Powell, Councilmember Parker, Mayor Cogswell.
Here. I'd now like to ask Councilmember Tinkler to give the invocation and lead everybody in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. If we could just bow our heads for a moment of silence. Amen, thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance under the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, indivisible, and every single citizen of its own.
All right, I would now like to ask Councilmember McBride to say a few words regarding Ralph Johnson and Veterans Day.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you for the opportunity. I was just doing some research to be able to honor a Charlestonian for Veterans Day, so it keeps it fresh in our minds as to, instead of just kind of nebulous that we're supporting veterans for Veterans Day, that, you know, we've had, we have veterans that served and have served with the ultimate sacrifice from Charleston. So this amazing Marine, I'll read about him briefly. I'd like to highlight Charlestonian native and Medal of Honor recipient Ralph H. Johnson, PFC or Private First Class Ralph H. Johnson, United States Marine Corps, was born on January 11th, 1949 in Charleston. He enlisted in the US Marine Corps in 1967. On March 5th, 1968, while deployed to Vietnam, PFC Johnson heroically absorbed the impact of a hand grenade blast and was killed instantly, saving the life of a fellow Marine at the cost of his own and preventing the enemy from penetrating their perimeter. Johnson was posthumously awarded the Congressional Medal of Honor in September 1991. The Charleston VA Medical Center was renamed in his honor. And in March of 2018, the USS Ralph Johnson or DDG-114 was commissioned in Charleston, South Carolina. The USS Ralph Johnson is the 64th Arlie Burke-class guided missile destroyer in the United States Navy. And Ralph H. Johnson is just an example of just recognizing that any veteran that joins, whether they're, they serve in combat or don't serve in combat, whether they are injured in combat, whether they die in combat, every veteran joins and they raise their right hand and swear an oath to the Constitution of the United States to support and defend it potentially with their lives. And so on this Veterans Day, which is actually yesterday, and every Veterans Day, I just want to thank you, thanks to all the veterans out there that are willing to make that, make that sacrifice and for Ralph H. Johnson earning the highest medal that it can possibly be given in our United States military. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember McBride. I would now like to invite some very special guests that we have here tonight. Up on the dais, me, Charlemagne the God, Representatives of Seacoast Church, the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter, Church of Jesus Christ, Low Country Food Bank, Cuisine Rescue, Coastal Community Church, come on up, come on up, come on up, come on up. Covenant Life Ministries, Stone Food Collective slash St. Matthew's Lutheran Church, and our own Latasha Jenkins-Flood to join us up here as we read a proclamation regarding National Homeless Awareness Week. Come on up. Make room, make room, make room, like a traffic conductor right? We can, we can squeeze, we get comfortable up here. Well, you can come forward, we can, we can double up, we can double up, two rows, two rows. Whereas, for over 25 years, the city of Charleston has sponsored National Homeless Awareness Week. And whereas, the purpose is to educate the public about the many reasons people are hungry and homeless, including the shortage of affordable housing in the city of Charleston for low-income residents. And whereas, to encourage support for homeless assistance service providers, as well as community service opportunities for service organizations. And whereas, there are many organizations committed to sheltering and providing supportive services, as well as meals and food supplies to people experiencing homelessness, including Covenant Life Ministries, Folly Road Church of Christ, Seacoast Church, Coastal Community Church, Church of Jesus Christ of the Latter-day Saints, the Stone Group Collective slash St. Matthew's Lutheran Church, Cuisine Rescue, Low Country Food Bank, and Mr. Leonard McKelvey, now publicly known as Charlemagne the God. And whereas, the Hope Center recognizes that hunger and homelessness continue to be a serious problem for many individuals and families in the city of Charleston. And whereas, the intent of National Homeless Awareness Month is consistent with the activities of Mr. Leonard McKelvey. Now, all right, I'm embarrassed. Charlemagne. And now, therefore, I, William S. Cogswell, Mayor of the city of Charleston, do hereby proclaim November 24th, November 2024 as National Hunger and Homeless Awareness Month. And I'd like to invite Leonard up to the dais if he'd like to say a few words. Yeah, see, I want to get your back on that one.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you, and I'm always here to be of service. Thank you to the Hope Center for even making me aware of what was going on in the city of Charleston, you know, as far as homelessness is concerned. And anytime, you know, I can be of service to the city of Charleston, I will be because I am a native of the Low Country monks going to South Carolina all day. So, thank you all.
Thanks, right. Thank you, thank you, sir. All right. Thank you all. I appreciate it all. All right, while everybody's making their way off the dais, I want to, we're moving on to public hearing. I'm going to just remind everybody that is speak, that has signed up to speak to follow the rules of decorum. I'd also ask everybody in the audience, make sure during this time and throughout the council meeting that you silence your telephones. And again, in terms of the rules of decorum, please be respectful, please do not direct any of your commentary towards individual council members. This is not a question and answer session. If you break the rules of decorum, we will give you one warning. If you break them again, you will be escorted out of council chambers. Madam Clark, how many people do we have signed up?
So we have, this is for the closing and abandonment of a right, right-of-way for Sumar Street. We have two people signed up. Was there anyone else who needed to speak to the public hearing who is not signed up? Looks like we just have two.
We'll give a minute and a half.
All right, Anthony Bryant.
For the record, I wasn't able to call in for the Union Pair piece at all. And I'm not dressed appropriately, as you can see, I was with my mom. But this is really about existing residents now, okay? The people in Sumar Street in that area need to be made very comfortable. Progress is an inconvenience. So as you begin to start doing this plan as to get to soften hard cost money, that's the process of progress is money that these folk who exist there now, many of them are senior citizens. Many of them will not even recognize or realize or even be people that will benefit at all from what you are proposing. And so you're, you're better on the future at the expense of the existing residents. We're not move beyond Union Pair. We had warning and giving notice to those citizens that you need to have a right to complain about any inconvenience you have for progress.
Mohammed Durees.
Evening. We have a new president, and he don't take any stuff. With all that went against him, he made me very proud of him to come out of that election with everything. You threw everything at him except the kitchen sink, as they would say. But the people of America voted for Donald Trump, our new president. I came here one, a couple of times, and I showed you all a book. And the book say, why we want to be, why we want you to be rich. Donald Trump told the public, why would you take your money and put it in another man's hand to take care? You can't take care of your own money. I pray God, that God protect him, and I believe with all sincerity that our country has arrived. Thank you.
Was there anyone else who wanted to speak to the public hearing? I think that's all we have, Mayor. But we don't, so this is not up for, this is just a public hearing tonight. The ordinance will come back at a later meeting.
So we have no action.
Wait, I'm, I'm sorry, Julia.
We need no vote.
See, okay, never mind.
We have a motion and properly seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Now, moving on to approval of council minutes. Motion probably seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. All right, now we are on to citizens' participation. Again, this will be 30 minutes or up to 30 minutes. How many people do we have signed up for citizen participation?
We have five people signed up to speak.
Okay, I'm going to give everybody a minute and a half on citizens' participation. Again, we went over the rules of decorum, they still apply for this, for citizen participation. Please be respectful, please wind up after a minute and a half, and please do not direct any of your commentary towards individual council members.
All right, so we will start with the in-person list first. Mohammed Durees.
Evening. The Bible said that in the last day the trumpet would be blown. And that's what took place on the 5th of November. America voted for the trumpet to be blown. And Donald Trump didn't duck no punches. He took it all. And he gonna blow his trumpet. Thank you.
Zach BCD.
Zach BCD, 59 Cypress. Typically, when government takes over an industry, it acts as a democratizing force, expanding opportunity and allowing for greater diversity of participants. In the case of petty cabs, it has been the exact opposite, as this council's laws have actively blocked new business formation, investment, and earnest competition since 2011. Creating opportunity for a wider array of citizens to participate in industry, in this case, a green, sustainable local industry, is simply just good policy. You want to allow room for entrepreneurship and provide a reasonable path for opportunity for all citizens. We would not accept this situation if it were in any other industry or commercial enterprise. But you do so with petty cabs because it's overlooked or worse yet, belittled. The current situation is unacceptable, and if it's not fixed now, there will not be any other opportunity until 2036 because of a five-year bid and automatic renewal. If you fail to, if you fail to act on this, you're not just stripping me of this opportunity, you're stripping opportunity from an entire generation of aspiring entrepreneurs. This is not an issue about insurance, this is about opportunity. And you ought to be creating opportunity for your citizens to invest locally, simply said. Thank you.
Susan Lyons.
Susan Lyons for Groundswell. First of all, I'm grateful that we didn't have any floods this year, any major hurricanes. And I just wanted to say that my neighbors and the members of Groundswell are anxious to hear when the GIS system for the basin maps will be completed, and also what the timeline is going to be on the knee wall and, and the budget for that, how that's going to work. So, thank you.
Herb Partlow, I'm sorry, Anthony Bryant.
I went to North Charleston, and Mayor Burgess hosted the Attorney General of South Carolina. I got a letter, I presented it to North Charleston 1292010 regarding a complaint about office on violence against women, streets and cops, and community or any policing. Little did I know that my name was been in the Charles County School District for years as a batter of women, an on and offline predator, right? So you all got wives, right, and children. You would want me around them, right? The historical legacy of that, the Mr. Burgess, the mayor, and women's group around the country is lynching. So my name is connected to the historical legacy of lynching. I'm not Mr. Burgess. I don't go, I saw these churches up here and all that. Separation of churches stayed. Churches played a major role in slavery and Jim Crow. And I don't, that's why I don't deal with them with that. That was spread out that Anthony G. Bryant beats women, and he's a horrible predator on women and children in this city. By the Attorney General of South Carolina, I was born and blessed in Charleston. I don't run from nothing to nobody. So when you come, you better come long, hard, and frequently.
Herb Partlow.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Herb Partlow. I'm the chairman of the Board of Commissioners for the Housing Authority of the city of Charleston. One of the first things I want to do on behalf of my fellow commissioners, our CEO Art Milligan and his team, I want to actually thank Mayor Cogswell. I want to thank the city council, and I want to thank the city of Charleston for being outstanding partners with us. We have partnered together on the Esau Jenkins Village Senior Affordable Housing Project. We've partnered on the Archer School Senior Housing Project, and we recently partnered on the King and Hughie Street Pump Station. So I want to thank you all for that and the support. The 275 Hughie Street Redevelopment Project is on tonight's agenda, and I, and this is the first of several HUD and RAD Section 18 repositioning projects where we're going to be adding a lot more affordable housing units for the city of Charleston. So I'm hopeful that the city council will approve the gap funding request, which will enable us to deal, to close the deal during the first quarter of 2025 with the subsequent groundbreaking, hopefully in early April of next year. And again, I want to thank you all again for your continued support as we work together to bring more affordable housing to the city of Charleston. Thank you.
And those were all the speakers that we had signed up. We did receive one comment from Mr. Bryant that was sent to, that was sent to council members in full, and those were all the comments we've received.
Okay, we are now moving on to petitions and communications. There are a few appointments for planning and commission and BZA zoning. Do we have a motion?
Some moved.
Motion for, this would, I'm sorry, we have motion probably seconded, we have questions of Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can, is anyone from planning here, can they tell me the makeup of the commission at this point, as far as area?
We have somebody.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm here.
Robert.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of the, the council, so I'll be honest, I don't have the specifics on each of these three members. The, the first one is a new appointment, the other two are reappointments. But we, we are spread out pretty, pretty much around the city. The only area that we are not currently represented, I believe, is Daniel Island, Kanehoy. We initially had requested to try to find someone up in that area to replace an outgoing member about six, nine months ago, and we were not able to do that. But generally speaking, we are, the, the planning commission is probably geographically our most diverse group with folks of West Ashley, Johns Island, the peninsula, and I actually think we had a couple people, Johns Island, hold on a second, I'm getting a text, and...
Mr. Hirsch, I would tell you, is replacing a, a West Ashley board member, and he is from Johns Island. It was important to have, they didn't at the time have a Johns Island representative on there. So he is from Johns Island. We've actually been talking with the planning commission about the individual who was very dedicated to planning commission, a longtime member, about potentially bringing her on as an at-large member because we're going to need to take some action in order to allow that to happen. But some of these commissions need to have the opportunity to have at-large membership because they are running into occasionally quorum issues. So that's, we talked about councilman seeking.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we vote, I'm going to vote in favor of all this, but I just, as a quick reminder, and I think Councilmember Brady is listening, we have had some discussion this year about going back and looking at committees and commissions, one of which could be we add at-large positions. The second is to look at the terms of the members, because as you recall, we had a conversation around this table, that there's some committees and commissions where the term that people sit is longer than the term we sit. And I think we kind of agreed that probably wasn't the best idea. So we take up the rules in January, perhaps we, if Councilmember Brady is so willing to just go take a look at these terms of the committees and commissions and even and square them up so that we all have an understanding how long people are going to sit.
That works for me.
Thanks.
Okay, great. Any further questions on this?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the alternate, is that part of this?
Oh, it is not part of this. That'll be separate. And we'll, like I say, I think that'll be a good thing to take up.
Mayor, that item's on for first reading later in your agenda.
Great, all right, thank you. All right, we have motion probably seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
And just to confirm, I'm sorry, that motion was for both the planning commission and BZA zoning? Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have one consent agenda item report, HR. There's no action required on this, but I've turned it over to Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, like I said earlier in the budget workshop, y'all, it, it was a brief presentation for what was, you know, obvious, lengthy, very long study, deep dive into our human resources, you know, all of our staffing. So I, I don't have specifics to share with you. We weren't really given, as I recall, dollar amounts that we could implement in HR, but I, I, again, I would encourage this body to really put our staff at the forefront of your decision-making process during this budget season. I know we have a new administration, but we've all been here a few years now, a lot, lot, some have been here a lot longer. I think we, you know, they are the backbone of everything that we do, every core government service that we are required to give our citizens is on the backs of our employees. So I just highly suggest that you take a look at it once it's, once it's sent out and, but yeah, no action required.
Okay, calling Councilwoman Brady for public safety.
It'd be Councilman Shealy, correct?
I'm sorry, reading the wrong time. Sorry, Councilman Shealy, my apologies.
Thank you, Mayor Cogswell. The Committee on Public Safety met Wednesday, October 16th at 4:00 PM. There were two things that we did here. We had two police department approvals of a law enforcement assistant and support agreement, one with the Colliton County Sheriff's Office and another one with the Greenville County Sheriff's Office. And I would ask that, that council approve, approve this from here.
Motion probably seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Now.
That concludes my report.
Move, what would, okay, thank you. Councilman Mitchell for community development.
So he is not here, and the vice chairman is not here. Does anyone want to cover the community development?
Can we just move for adoption of the report, or is there something we need to know about? Move for adoption of the report.
A motion to adopt the report, probably seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Now, we are on to Committee on Recreation. Call in Councilwoman Parker.
I'm sorry, y'all, this was a long time ago. I don't believe we had anything to vote on. Oh, I'm sorry, the small construction item 3B3? Is that the only thing we need to vote on?
And there's the, the resolution adopting the special event policies.
All right, I'm, I just make a motion to approve 3B3 and 3B4.
Tag.
Motion made and properly seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Eyes have it. Opposed, I guess? Okay, eyes have it. Greenfield Public Works, Councilmember Waring.
All the items you see on your agenda pass unanimously, and I move to adoption of the report.
Motion probably seconded. Any further discussion on any of these items? Council, and Greg?
Get the next one. I'm sorry.
Yeah, just item 4B2 on the renaming of the bridge. Joe Coats was a, as you, I don't know if you heard, but he was the emergency management coordinator for Charleston County. And he was a Daniel Island resident, extremely instrumental, a community-led, he was the scout master for our local Boy Scout troop. Sadly, a young man succumbed to cancer a few months, six months ago, and would like, I think this is a great way to honor his legacy of service to our community, both in the county and, and in the city. So thank you all for taking that.
I just have one comment.
Member McBride?
Yeah, just one small correction on item 4B1. It's Johns Island City Park, not County Park.
Councilmember McBride, I'm sorry, can you repeat that? We couldn't hear you.
Yeah, just a small correction on item 4B1 or 1 about the approval of the maintenance agreement with Charleston County. That's, it talks about Long Maybank Highway and Johns Island County Park, it should be City Park.
That's as amended. That's as amended.
A motion probably seconded as amended, we have it seconded, okay. Although, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, thank you, Councilman McBride for catching that. Traffic and Transportation, Councilman Seekings.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, the Committee on Traffic and Transportation met on October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. We had four items, one of which actually was deferred. We got an update on the Upper King Street Rideshare Pilot Program. You recall what that is, that's the designated spaces for pickup and drop-off of the TNCs, Ubers and Lifts. The program is going well, they asked that we extend it through the end of the year and include a new drop-off and pickup spot on Calhoun Street. The committee agreed to do that and hear back from them at the first of the year. So the pilot program has been extended. We got a report on the Assay River Crossing Bridge Project, that is a go, you've all heard a lot about it. I'm not sure you need to hear any more other than it is happening. If you go over to the West Ashley side, there's actually activity over there. We are working through the design on the Charleston Lockwood side, which will include both some new amenities for the bikes, the turnaround, the connection both north and south to the Riverwalk and a connection in across Lockwood to, across Lockwood into the Medical District. So all is going well, more to come on that. We did authorize the mayor to execute an assignment from Superior to Mastech for the Assay River Crossing Project. We did it, you can give us an update as you see fit, not necessarily tonight. And then the last item was deferred and there is definitely more to come on that. And I would ask for the adoption of the report.
We have a question from Councilman Waring.
Yeah, I have a second, but I just want to get it on the floor so I can get information on another subject, dealing with TNT.
Okay.
All right, can, can Mr. Somerville come to the microphone? I figured between Mr. Somerville and Councilman Seekings, we can get an answer on this. Wallenberg Boulevard, Wallenberg Street, Raoul Wallenberg, correct, thank you. Which is West Ashley, happens around District Seven. That street is getting to be, at certain times, in particular Rush Hour, bumper to bumper. And there's a school as well as a synagogue. What is the process of getting a proper crosswalk for people to cross effectively?
Well, it all depends, I think Wallenberg is a state maintained road, so we would have to go through DOT. They would have to review it for either a school zone or a protective crossing. And I think that would be a mid-block.
Yeah, it would be.
Yes.
It's not at the corner, you're right. Okay.
And that's not covered in the road safety audit, any of the road safety audits that are.
Not that such.
I think you just need to ask Mr. Somerville to do it and then we'll see what the D O T has to say about it.
Okay, so, thank you, sir, thank you, Mr..
And just as in terms of an update on that assignment, they, the contractor that was looking to have it assigned to did agree to waive or drop those change order requests. So mission accomplished. So again, we have motion made, properly seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, eyes have it, now I'd like to call on Councilman Greg for Ways and Means Report.
Move for approval of the reports as amended as to both, as the real estate committee.
Yes, motion properly seconded, any further discussion on these items? If none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Right.
Opposed, eyes have it, just record note, I believe we have one abstention from Councilman Waring on that particular purchase with the Catholic Diocese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and clerk.
Yeah, looking out for you. There are four bills up for final reading. Can I get a motion? We need.
For second, move one through four, second reading.
A motion made, probably seconded with the, for one through four, you have to take them.
Yep.
All, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it.
So move a third reading.
So move, probably seconded for third reading, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, eyes have it. And then we have, there's one bill up, first reading, which is. Where am I?
That's, this is, yes, the ordinance regarding alternates in one.
Oh, there we go. This, we talked about this a little bit earlier, we'd like to modify the ordinance to allow for members at large on certain boards that are having a hard time occasionally meeting quorums. I think this is a great opportunity, case of the, the planning commission where we've had a longtime member who's very dedicated. We did feel it really important geographically to have representation on Johns Island, hence Mr. Hirsch. And so I think this is a great opportunity to allow a dedicated civil servant to continue helping the city on a volunteer basis. So that's the impetus for this, but I think it'll have applications beyond as necessary. So I have a motion to approve.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
A motion probably seconded, Councilman Appel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just real quickly, you know, I served on the BZA before going on to city council and had the opportunity to serve with Lenny Krawcheck, who served on the BZA longer than Mayor Riley served as the mayor of the city of Charleston, which says something. And i- it's valuable because aside from being a great guy and really a good leader of that board for many years, there is so much value add on these boards when you have experience in understanding the city and understand our, our regulations and just how everything works together. And so having this, these alternates and allowing someone like Ms. Jacobs, who lives in my district, that's very passionate, been involved for a long time, I think is a good value add for not just the planning commission, but also our other quasi judicial boards that perform an extremely valuable role in our government and oftentimes are involved in meetings that go much longer than this, this one, at least certainly recently. And so these are very important roles, very important people. And when people have demonstrated the kind of dedication over the years like Ms. Jacobs has, I think it's very worthwhile doing what we can to keep her involved. So I think this is a great thing that we're doing.
Councilman Waring?
I'd like to follow up, Councilman Ross, exemplary remarks, because Ms. Jacobs is indeed that. Plus, we're also getting ready to redo our comprehensive plan and having that institutional knowledge. And I can speak from that because I served on the planning commission for seventeen years. So having gone through that process a time or two, both from the planning commission and now council. So having that institutional knowledge, when you look at your zoning codes citywide, as we say, it's priceless. So thank you so much for, hopefully we'll put it back, thank you.
Okay, any further commentary? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sorry, wait, did we have somebody raising their hand online?
Sorry, after this one, I say aye for this.
Okay, Councilman McBride, you have something to say, I didn't catch that.
Sorry, I just wanted to get a comment in before we closed, closed up. Sorry, it's out of place here, I just wanted to thank the mayor for identifying that we didn't have a Johns Island representative on the planning commission and give me the opportunity to find a very, very well-qualified individual. He's in the audience, in the public seating there, Mr. Hirsch. I'm grateful for the council for approving him. He also happens to be a civil engineer on Seabrook Island. So he's got a comprehensive view, he lives on Johns Island, obviously, in the city, but works in Seabrook and has, has a really good pedigree and background in civil engineering. And I'm very, very grateful we have a Johns Island representative on the planning commission.
Thank you for all your hard work on helping to pair it out some very qualified candidates. It was, it was a lot of interest in this one. So, Councilman Waring?
You know, one last thing, you know, it's funny, we took it for granted, but even tonight, the chairman of the Housing Authority came up to that microphone and spoke to housing, affordable housing projects that's ongoing in the city. Without these boards and commissions, a large part of the city would crank to a halt. And you know what? The state of South Carolina in large part is run by boards and commissions. So we thank those people and all of them are volunteers.
Yep.
Thank you so much.
Okay, all right, we have motion properly seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, eyes have it, our next meeting will be on Tuesday, November twenty-sixth, five P M.